Invitation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Barker.
Heavenly Father, we are gathered together this evening to perform city business. We ask for your guidance and oversight for us and our staff as we continue to keep this community a great place to live, work, own a business, and raise a family. We ask for your oversight and protection and for our first responders and all our military members of the community as well as their families wherever they are serving throughout the world. Keep them all safe as they protect us in our way of life and bring them all home safe at the end of their duty day. We also ask for your blessing to the re-elected city council members and the newly elected city council member, Mr. Schroeder. We also extend this to our outgoing member, Mr. Walden, and wish them the best and hopefully we'll see him in attending more meetings in the very future. In the Lord's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's great to see such a big turnout for the support of the folks getting sworn in. And I'd like to recognize a couple council members from our neighbor city of Queen Creek. We have Jeff Brown and Robin Benning in the audience, so thank you for making the trip out. Roll call.
Mayor Sertie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Struble.
Here.
Councilmember Waldron.
Here.
All members present, you have a quorum, Your Honor.
We have a motion on the consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Your Honors.
Dave, do you want to go down to the podium with me?
Sure, as long as you don't hurt me, we'll be fine.
Matt, can we get the...
Yes.
This is scary.
So, Dave moved in 1993, served on... He was a member of... Was elected, was... And again, served ten... We got thirty alternatives.
Mayor wants you not to use that mic.
Yeah, I'll talk about if we run into.
He was also the chair of the Penale County Air and Quality Hearing Board and the County Rural Transportation Committee and also ended up as the... Ended up as the chairman of CAG, which is very important for our roads out here. So, big shoes to fill. So, we'll let him watch this stuff. He also chaired the veterans parade for many years.
This is one of my favorites. I tried to find the video for this because Dave...
That's not Dave's house.
He was the first one that got up and got to tear it down, yep. That's Dave.
Yes, it is.
Where's that one, Dave?
That's in the...
The Rutchin Plainway Gateway. Thank you, Dave.
We have a plaque for Dave. As well as, this is the picture that hung upstairs as long as you're on the council, so he gets to take that home also. And does he get the nameplate?
We'll get the nameplate, yeah.
We'll get that nameplate.
You put this on your mail box.
There's a P and Z on the back. You get to be both.
I just want to say thank you. You know, the honor isn't serving on the council. The honor is being able to run for public office. And I appreciate the time. There's an excellent staff here. We're so lucky that, you know, the council has a staff like this to work with. And I wish you all the best and, you know, in the future, I'll be around. I'll be back.
Thank you. Dave, 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 over here.
Over here.
I just wanted to thank you personally and say it was a pleasure working with you and serving with you. You're a true gentleman, and I look forward to doing more projects together.
And we expect to see you back in the audience.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I would be remiss if I didn't say on behalf of the staff, we thank you, Dave. Thank you for your great work and professionalism in helping guide this wonderful city, and we thank you. You will be missed.
I'm embarrassed.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Kathy, now, what order do we go in here? We're now going to do the oath of the newly seated mayor and council members.
I will do the oath, Your Honor. And then, let me do this brief announcement. Every two years, I have the opportunity to swear in our new mayor and council members. And it's something I always look forward to doing. Taking, for the benefit of the audience, taking the oath of office is not just ceremonial. It is actually a legal requirement for all elected officials and public employees in Arizona. The wording of the oath is taken directly from state law, so the oath taken tonight by our mayor and council is very similar to that taken by the governor and members of the state legislature. I will begin by swearing in Mayor-elect Sertie. I will then swear in each of the council members elect in alphabetical order. And as I complete each oath, I will present them with a certificate of election, which is also a requirement of state law. And after I have completed all of the oaths, you can take your seats and then proceed with the business for the rest of the evening. So, I will start with Mayor Sertie. You'll have to forgive me. It's with the weather coming in, my knees and my arthritis are making standing very uncomfortable. Now, I will offer you the option of, do you want me to want to repeat it after me or do you want to read it?
I'll repeat after you.
Okay, raise your right hand. I, Jeff Sertie.
I, Jeff Sertie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
And the ordinances of the city of Apache Junction.
And the ordinances of the city of Apache Junction.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign or domestic.
Foreign or domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. And the next one is Mrs. Evans. And I'll offer you the same option. Would you prefer to read it or repeat after me?
I'll read it.
Okay.
I can go faster.
Okay, please raise your right hand.
I, Gail Evans, do solemnly swear to affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona and the ordinances of the city of Apache Junction, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign or domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of council member according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Thank you. Okay, and Mrs. Rizzi. Would you prefer to read it or repeat after me?
Kathy, I'll repeat after you.
Okay, raise your right hand. I, Krista Rizzi.
I, Krista Rizzi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
And the ordinances of the city.
And the ordinances of the city.
Of Apache Junction.
Of Apache Junction.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign or domestic.
Foreign or domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations. And what is your preference, to read it or...
Obey.
Okay. I, Robert Schroeder.
I, Robert Schroeder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
And the state of Arizona.
And the ordinances of the city of Apache Junction.
And the ordinances of the city of Apache Junction.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign or domestic.
Foreign or domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Now, Your Honor, with everybody sworn in, you can proceed with the rest of the agenda.
We're already in session. I don't need to re-adjourn, right? So, wait for Robert to sit down.
We'll have the record reflect that.
Okay.
Councilmember Schroeder has been seated.
Okay. Do we have any announcements or current events?
Sorry. Anyway. This past weekend, we had the first annual prayer walk, and it was really well-attended, and we're going to be looking forward to the next one next year. Just also like to remind everybody, on January 27th, that's 12 days from now, actually 11 days if you don't count today. It's really coming up fast. But on January 27th at Barleens, we're going to be having the second annual AJ Kids Idol. It's where we have a competition with the kids from kindergarten through 12th grade with their talents. And the Kiwanis Club of Apache Junction is hosting it, and it's a great way to raise money for our school system. We're raising money this year for the music program to buy new instruments and repair existing instruments. So, if you guys would like to attend, it's a great, great venue and a great opportunity to see the kids perform. So, again, January 27th from 5:00 to 8:00.
I just wanted to share that over the holiday break, I had the honor of taking once again our junior honor society from Cactus Canyon to a couple of our retirement homes around the community. And just wanted to thank them for, they make Christmas cards every year. The younger kids, the elementary kids, and then the junior high kids come along with me to the retirement centers, and we visit the residents there. And the residents are just so full of joy when they receive the cards from these children, and that people in the community remember and are thinking about them. And so, again, I just wanted to thank them. It was a great time. We have a great time every year. They sing carols. It's just, it's a really, it's a really amazing thing to go and watch. Some of the residents have memory problems, but when we start to sing the carols, their memory comes back, and they actually remember the words. Lot of tears, lot of laughs and hugs, and so it's just really a joyous time. And again, I just want to thank those students at Cactus Canyon that come along and do that every year, and the kids that make those cards. Also, and I feel bad, I don't have the name of this person, but my internet's not working on my phone, and I couldn't find it. Recently on Facebook, there had been a post about a World War II veteran in California that was turning 96. And we know in Apache Junction how important our veterans are to us here. His daughter had posted that the only thing he wanted for his 96th birthday was birthday cards. And so, once again, the students from our school district came together and they made birthday cards for this gentleman. Most of us here on the city council signed a birthday card for him, and then there were people in the community that had also brought cards. And we ended up with 153 cards from Apache Junction to tell this World War II veteran happy birthday and just that we appreciated him for his service. And that's just the kind of community that we have here in Apache Junction. We're just, we're a very kind and generous community, and I just, I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Do you want to mention the voting on the lights?
I do. We have, yeah, a lot of people have asked with the decorated, the holiday decorating competition, where is that survey link? Where's our voting link? We've run into a big snag. It's been a little bit frustrating. We have a Plan B. We believe we may have to just post everything on Facebook and count the votes off of Facebook. We were hoping to actually have a link that we could send out. Haven't forgotten. There were, I think there were 20 entrants this year, but even businesses that didn't enter the decorating contest, it's called Light the Trail for those of you that may not know, were trying to make Apache Junction a go-to place for the holidays to see Christmas lights. There were, I think, 20 that entered, but even those that didn't enter, there was a lot of them that decorated and lit up, and they're starting to get the idea of how the whole community can look when they do this. So, we haven't, we're still working on it. We're hoping if we can't get this, the photos, the issue is that the photos aren't uploading. And so, if we can't get that done, we're probably going to go to Plan B, create something on Facebook and do the voting that way. But we want to get that done. Some of those people really spent a lot of time decorating. There were a couple of great ones out there, so we want to make sure that that award does go out to whoever the community votes on. So, thanks for asking about that, Mayor.
Okay. A lot, a lot of people want to know why I'm dressed so sharply tonight, and that's because my daughter Taylor just got married this month, and this is what she made me wear. And so, it's a shame to just put it in the closet and not wear it, so I'm wearing it. And she's here with her husband, Ryan, tonight. They've been married about a month. And my daughter-in-law Clarissa and grandson Kayden are here also for the swearing in, so thank you. Also, we had airport board meeting this morning, and Allegiant Airlines is still adding destinations. They're now flying to most of the small cities in the West, and they added Kalispell, Montana, and Grand Junction, Colorado. They're up to 48 different destinations now. So, instead of having to go to Denver and driving, you can get pretty much to where you want to go in the West, thanks to Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. And they just reported that they had the busiest year they've ever had. Also, last week, I had an invitation from Senator Martha McSally to meet with all of the Penale County mayors. And I want to commend her because she is reaching out to every mayor in the entire state of Arizona. She's going to go to all 15 counties to hear what their problems are and what their needs are. And she's met with everybody in the valley, and she's continuing to do that. So, I think she's going to be very accessible. If anybody wants to know how to get ahold of her, then contact me, and she's hiring a staff, and I'll pass that on. And I think we're going to have a very accessible senator. Bryant, City Manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor, Bryant Powell, City Manager. Congratulations, Councilmember Robert Schroeder.
Thank you, Bryant.
We have staff ready to help support and do all we can to help all of our council, and we congratulate you on your new post. I'm thrilled to be able to read to you and report a letter I received from one of our police officers. This week has been a tough week, as you know, in Arizona for those who serve as a peace officer. And it was really neat to receive this letter from one of our residents about Officer Painter. It says here that he was immediately impressed with him. He was sharp, professional, very polite, willing to engage with him on his concern in a manner that did not make him feel like what I came about was not important. He was patient and willing to hear my concerns. Now, what he says is really neat. He says, Now, what he says is really neat, he says, "Now, that is really, I was very impressed, I feel that Apache Junction is very fortunate to have a fine example of a police officer in your department." Our goal is to have that across all of our officers and all of our staff and to be able to provide that service and level of customer service is, is wonderful. And so we highlight that tonight and we thank, uh, Officer Painter for his great service. And we thank all those who serve in such a dangerous capacity and hope and pray that they will be kept safe. And that concludes my report, Your Honor.
Okay. Public hearing for consideration of application for special, uh, special event liquor license for Salt River Wild Horse Management Corporation. That would be, Kathy?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a request from the Salt River Wild Horse Management Corporation for a one-day special event liquor license, uh, for an event that would be held on Saturday, January 26th at, uh, Superstition Harley-Davidson. In your packet, you have comments from, um, members of the Planning Division, Building Division, Police Department and the Fire District, all of whom recommend approval of this application. And, uh, the applicants were notified of tonight's meeting in the event you have any questions for them.
Is an applicant here and would they like to speak? You don't have to, but if you wanna speak, you can.
I'm ready to be questioned.
Okay. So, uh, is there any discussion among council? Oh, she's coming down, hold on. Yes. So what else is gonna happen?
Uh, it's our fourth annual ride, it's from 11 to 4. And I've mapped everything out for you guys, it's for the birth control of the wild horses and all the fun stuff that they do.
That's what I was gonna ask, is it just the fundraiser, what do they do with the funds and?
It's a fundraiser, yeah, they have a facility now off of the beeline somewhere, it's kind of a, off a beaten path.
Yeah, and I just heard of-
But they, they fix all the broken horses and they try to keep them off the roads and...
Yeah, and I saw where a big one just got hit and killed up there last week, so, alright.
We do need your name and address for the record.
Yeah.
Home address?
You can give the business address.
Green and Brown, I just moved. 10263 East Carmel, Mesa, Arizona.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? This is a public hearing, would anyone like to speak on this issue? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move with the application for a special event liquor license for Salt River Wild Horse Management Corporation for an event to be held at Superstition Harley-Davidson, 2910 West Apache Trail, Apache Junction, Arizona, on Saturday, January 26th, 2019. Be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Presentation, discussion, public hearing and possible consideration of the proposed active transportation plan. Larry Kirch?
Mayor Councilmembers, uh, Larry Kirch, Director of Development Services. Just a couple of quick remarks, this project was funded through MAG, Maricopa Association of Governments. They also funded four other cities in the region to go through a similar process, Queen Creek got some money, um, Glendale, Peoria, I believe. Maricopa County itself just finished an active transportation plan and MAG, which serves, I think, the 46 communities in the Maricopa County, city of Maricopa, some Pinell County cities, also doing a, uh, region-wide active transportation plan. So I think it's timely that the city, uh, has been doing this. Um, I just wanna thank everybody who's participated over the last year. Uh, last, uh, two weeks ago, this was on, last week was on the, a joint meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Park and Rec Board, they voted, uh, 12 to 1 in favor of, uh, accepting this or adopting this and then incorporating it into the general plan as we adopt that, uh, about a year from now. So, I'll turn it over to, uh, Dean Chambers from J2, he'll give a short presentation and then we'll have a public hearing and let the folks, uh, in the audience tell you what, uh, what's on their mind about the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I'm Dean Chambers with J2 Design and with me tonight is Jamie Blakeman, our lead in our traffic engineering group. So, we started this project almost a year ago, um, in February and so, this is the, the fruition of, of almost a year's work, many outreaches to the public and, and, and surrounding agencies. And so, first of all, active transportation is walking, hiking, biking, horseback riding, wheelchairs, personal, uh, mobility devices, scooters, electric bicycles, all of that falls in, non-motor vehicle, uh, transportation. So our guiding principles are the six E's, engineering, education, encouragement, enforcement, evaluation and equity, that was the basis of the plan, along with being a bicycle and walk-friendly community and at the, after approval of the plan, we will be submitting to each of those, uh, groups for, um, to be rated as bike and walk-friendly communities. It's a scorecard of, of how are, how are we doing? We had 26 public and stakeholder outreach events and that was, um, around 2,000 contacts with the public and stakeholders, so we heard really good information throughout the process. 67% of the people that responded to the survey live in Apache Junction, 79% are 45 years old or older. And the most important items were trails, sidewalks or shared-use paths and bicycle We, we looked at the crash data for, for bicyclists and pedestrians and there have been nine fatalities, uh, since 2009 and four, nine pedestrian, four bicycle, uh, one pedestrian and one bicyclist just since we started this plan. And when you look at the map, the areas that are, that are concentrated of those crashes are mainly the arterial roadways and especially Apache Trail, the east-west porch, portion, and then, uh, down, uh, on Broadway, southern and up on, uh, Superstition Boulevard. So, one of the things, um, with the plan, uh, is right-sizing roads and sharing the road and how do we do that and some of the issues and solutions. And we, we use Superstition Boulevard as an example of, it has a fairly high rate of pedestrian-bicycle crashes, uh, it has excess capacity based on the, uh, traffic counts and projected traffic counts. Uh, there's existing SRP power poles, uh, that are very close to the roadway edge and, uh, are within the, the safety zone. And we realize, everything costs money to implement, so, uh, this is a situation that, uh, there's pavement, it may be, could be restriped, uh, in the future, that reduces crashes, increases safety, uh, matches up the infrastructure. And, uh, there's a, a, a chart there with how, as you go towards the mountains to the north or east, uh, you know, traffic volume drops off, uh, through the community. As you head west towards, towards the valley, it, it increases. And, uh, a couple of things I wanna point out, uh, is that on a roadway such as that, we would not recommend any speed limit reduction, uh, below 35 miles an hour. And then, remember, uh, these are good test cases, uh, and paint markings and signage are a good test to see how well it works. That is, uh, uh, something that's been done throughout the world and with ma, much success and public, uh, buy-in. So the overall system map, uh, what is, uh, blue are bike, green are, um, are, uh, trails, soft trails, the magenta is, uh, shared-use paths, so it's paved and every time we have a paved path, we have a, a, uh, parallel trail to that. And then the orange are sidewalks. So if it's dashed, it's an existing facility, if it's solid, a solid line, it's proposed. And you can see there's quite a few solid lines on there, uh, that, uh, to, to have a network and create a network. And I wanna point out, uh, one of the things I keep getting asked about is, uh, we coined the phrase "the legacy loop," uh, and it's a, uh, shared-use path and I'll just start up at Meridian and the power line trail open space, it, it goes across the north edge of the city, turns south along the power line corridor, all the way down to the Siphon Draw crossing on the US 60. And that route has been on a master plan approved by the city since 1993. It follows Siphon Draw on down, oops, get my pointer going here, comes down to the CAP, follows the CAP up to Meridian and then parallels Meridian on back up. And that, that and some of the other trails and shared-use paths, biking, can become regional draws, attractions for, uh, people wanting to move here, visiting. So we have, uh, standards for everything from trails to roadways and so, just the various levels of trails from a backcountry two-foot wide trail up to, uh, a shared-use path. When we go out into the off-street areas or rural areas, separate those where we have the land in the more, uh, urbanized areas, uh, connect the trail and the shared-use path. And then we looked at the, the downtown area and the Apache Trail, the old highway. And where it, um, there's been the downtown plan, uh, in several renditions through the years, uh, we looked at, how can the roadway and the, the biking and pedestrians and trails and, and, and paths work with the roadway to create a downtown? And we are recommending a multi-lane boulevard, this was done in downtown Cathedral City, a similar, uh, highway situation converted to create a downtown. And, uh, then the rest of the trail and, and, uh, uh, Old West Highway would remain fairly much the same, but add the facilities on the side. And then, uh, there's the standard downtown main street for all of the side streets, similar to, uh, the, the part of the trail past the park. There are four character areas, the downtown, rural, standard and the Lost Dutchman Heights, the area south of Baseline Road. So matching those character areas with the types of roads, so keeping the rural rural from local streets up to arterial roads and matching those with the character and the types of volumes projected back in the 2012, uh, traffic study or transportation study. Standard streets, making sure we had sidewalks on both sides of the streets, always getting in bike lanes once we get up to a collector road, standard and above, but local streets, sharing the streets. Lost Dutchman Heights, that'll be a denser area, more volume, uh, on some of the roadways and matching those up. And these were based on, um, sections that they had in the original Portales Plan and just bringing those up to date to match the approach with the rest of the plan. And then, looking at a five-year, 10-year and 10-plus implementation and really that zero to five was working with your existing capital improvement program and projects and doing an analysis of, can we do it with paint, uh, in these first five years, be cost-effective, then looking on out the five and 10-year and starting to build the network and filling that in. And with that, thank you very much and then I'm open for questions.
Any questions? I think we'll come back for some after the public hearing? Or you want some now?
Well, I'm gonna ask a question, the aspect on, um, and I, I've addressed it, the, the aspect of superstition.
Mm-hmm.
And the aspect on, bringing it down to, uh, well, two lanes and a center turn lane. When was the study that's, that you used for traffic on that, when was that performed?
The, the traffic counts that we utilized were the latest done in 2017, so, uh, were the numbers that, that I had. And then the projections were the 2012, uh, transportation studies, those were the most current projections.
What time of the year were they done in?
The, uh, the, the most recent were, I believe it was a May count, uh, is when that was done.
Well, in the wintertime, superstition gets a lot more traffic.
Yes.
Than what happens in the, the May timeframe. Uh, for example, today I went up, stopped over at, uh, Circle K to get my Polar, which I have to have. And, uh, it took me several minutes just to get back out because of the traffic. And I've received a lot of, I'll say complaints from people that, um, have problems getting out of the post office because of the traffic, during the wintertime only. During summertime, if you wait three cars, you know, it's unusual.
Yes.
But during the wintertime, it's a lot more heavier traffic. So I'm very concerned about the idea of decreasing that down to basically two lanes with a center turn.
I would echo that, um, especially at, keeping the speed limits at 35 miles an hour with two lanes, a center turn lane, we already have pedestrian-bicycle conflict around the Plaza Road area, um, and around Ironwood, so it just seems like that is, is too congested to narrow it down that far. I, I realize that we also got a, a diet, a road diet sheet and I read through that and tried to apply that to this particular area and I still don't see that that's gonna be very helpful.
Okay. I also, I'm sorry, as I meet with other mayors and other folks around the state, they're all wanting to increase traffic lanes, not reduce them, so I, I think it's gonna be a terrible thing to go from five to three there and, so that's what I wanted to add.
I just had a little bit of a different opinion, I think it, um, when we slow the traffic down, it's gonna actually help it, um, we may have more congestion in the wintertime, but slowing the traffic down will mitigate being able to get out and navigate out back into traffic and so, um, I think we need, we're kind of at a turning point, um, and I think this transportation plan comes at a perfect time. Um, we need to kinda figure out where AJ's headed, are, are we going to, um, a lot of people come here for that small-town feel and part of that small-town feel is making the downtown and streets, um, walkable and pedestrian-friendly and so I think we need to start considering, are, are we going to, um, are we going to kinda protect that and look to, to keep that small-town slower, uh, traffic, um, that feel or, um, are we just gonna leave that behind and, and push forward?
Your Honor, Councilmember Rizzi? We're not slowing it down. It's, it's gonna go to 35 at, at a maximum, he said. So that's not really slowing that traffic down at all, 35 miles an hour is, is pretty darn fast when you're trying to speed into the road. You know, if they were slowing it down 25, I would agree with you.
And the speed limits don't bother me as much as losing the lanes.
Yeah.
I mean, everywhere you go, I mean, Tempe wishes the freeway, we're wider going through Tempe, go beyond Gold Canyon, they're stuck with two lanes, Casa Grande wants more lanes. We, we're gonna have more people, not less, so it's not gonna get any better, so I think it'd be terrible to cut this down to, to three.
Yeah, one of the questions I have on, on the same thing is, you know, you mentioned that the other cities are doing it, but when you drive from Mesa to here, their, their streets are wider and if we're gonna be funneling the traffic down to less lanes, um, we're just gonna, I, I feel like we're gonna be creating some hazards for people. I understand, 'cause I, I'm a bike rider, I'm a bicycle rider, so I understand, I mean, I've, I've ridden on, I've ridden my bicycle on those roads and up on Lost Dutchman and stuff and it can be a little hairy if, if, um, you know, with cars passing you and everything, so having bike lanes is important, but, um, we, we want, up in the north part of the city, we wanna keep it, um, the way it is. Um, and I know we don't want to increase the traffic at all, but it, it's, there's, I think you guys, I mean, I think this was trying to create some safety, some safety and I just believe that it might create, um, more hazards because of the people trying to turn- just believe that it might create more hazards because of the people trying to turn in on one lane instead of having two lanes to turn in on.
Mayor?
I agree. I think traffic naturally gets slower in the winter because we have obstacles with foreign plates on them that slow us all down, too. So that all works its way out.
I didn't want to say that.
I won't call them foreign, different areas.
Mayor, if I might address some of the concerns?
Sure.
So there is some counterintuitive nature to roadway design. And bigger does not equate to better, and faster does not equate to safer. At that, lower speeds are safer roads, and sizing the road to match the volume also helps with safety. When there's extra lanes, that encourages speeding along those roadways. So when we looked at superstition and saw the numbers, again, this is from a pretty high level, and that we thought, that looks like an opportunity to investigate further. So this plan recommends investigating further. It's not saying, "Do it now." It's saying, "Do a detailed traffic analysis of that roadway to make a determine, determination." You know, how are you best going to put these pedestrian and bicyclist areas into this roadway? This is, appears at this level, a very viable, cost-effective option, but it needs more detailed analysis. So one, one item on the turning is, there needs to be a gap analysis performed on that roadway at the signals at Idaho and Ironwood. So it may be a signal issue and not a lane volume issue. So with that, I'm-
So Joel and Bryant, once, when we're voting, what exactly will we be voting on? Just, you're not holding yourself?
Yeah.
I concur.
This is a plan, a goal.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's to accept the plan. However, it's still subject to further discussion and further investigation as set forth in the plan.
Okay.
You're not, you're not agreeing to do any of this, really. You're just, you're accepting the plan as a concept, and then later you can get more into the details.
Certainly a huge step as we go to get grants, certainly a huge step to lay a foundation, certainly a huge step when we work with our partner agencies and development community. As you've laid a goal in your general plan and in your values to have connectivity, we can now have a document that is approved by city council, that this is the direction. Now let's see how we make it work.
Well, you had the zero-to-five, five-to-ten, so when would we have a finished plan that we would actually approve?
Well, it's not a finished plan. It's, that's the goals, to do certain steps of this. Is that correct? The zero-to-five and the 15 and the 20?
Yes, Mayor and Councilman, Vice Mayor, yes, those are, sorry, Chip. They, those are priorities in those five-year segments. So that, those first five years, we utilize the existing capital improvements for streets to look at marrying active transportation. So trying to get those bike and pedestrian and equestrian elements into those first five years, then the next five years, you know, would, would, our recommendations would need to be looked at.
So council would approve them as they come up? Is that kind of how it would work?
So maybe we can, maybe Matt can explain a little bit, but from our standpoint, you have a five-year capital plan. We'd want to have you review that during that process. Then we also have a yearly annual budget plan that outlines the, the infrastructure that would be involved.
And so this, this whole exercise took a year of a lot of public input, a lot of different feedback. And the goal isn't striping on streets of this plan, that's part of it, but it's really active transportation, right? So how do we incorporate and make sure it's safe for horses and bikes and people walking to interact with traffic to cross the street, to get to businesses, all of that? And it, it creates a foundation for us. So when we have these further in-depth studies on roadways, we can better assess what our goals are. Okay, we want to remember that we want to incorporate bikes, we want to incorporate people crossing the street, we want to incorporate horses that are coming from the Y area of the city. How does it intersect with traffic? And this helps provide that foundation. So when we take a look at those, those in-depth studies, we know that this is important to you, that you want us to look at bicycle lanes, you want us to look at wider sidewalks, you want us to look at the intersections and the timing of lights and how they all work together. That's really what this document is about.
I reviewed the entire document, it was long reading, and had to go back several times on the aspect to fully understand. And overall, I fully agree, and I think it's fantastic. I just have concerns about that one issue.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd also like to give kudos to the staff and all the people that worked on this. This was a very long, hard-fought battle. I appreciate the sidewalks and the bike paths. This is, what, 25 years now? Thank you, thank you, and thank you. I think the concern is that, that all of a sudden, this road is going to be, you know, squeezed in and it's going to look all that different. But we're not going to do that. We're going to try it out. You may re-stripe it so that it has bike lanes, bike lanes, and two lanes with a turn lane. And if it doesn't work out, or it doesn't seem to meet the car count, et cetera, et cetera, then staff would come back to us and say, "Okay, this isn't working, we understand." So we'll have time to massage all of this, to work for everybody.
And people-
Mayor and Councilman, it needs more detailed engineering
Yes.
analysis before anything is done.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this is at the
Yeah, studies need to be done.
idea study level.
But we've got a great plan to start with.
Keep in mind, too, that people, if they just see different paint on the road and they're used to doing something, as per under the, at the freeway at Ironwood, what the state came in and changed those lanes, and people still drive where they're used to driving, that's been, that's been ongoing. So this is-
Question.
Yeah.
So I know you mentioned that there are, Larry, I guess, talked about, there were studies by other cities in Maricopa County and May and all this. How much involvement did the state have in on this? Because, you know, we have state roads in, in the, in the city and then going out of the city to the lakes, which right now don't have bike paths, which there's, you get up on the highway to the lake and people are riding their bikes, and that's just, that's scary. How much involvement did the state have on this and how much will they have in the future on this development?
Mayor and Councilman, the, the state active transportation staff was, was asked to be involved. They were in transition. I don't believe we had any at the meetings, but they were copied with all of the efforts throughout. It's, you know, it's really Idaho and Apache Trail. We have recommendations for bike lanes and paths and along those corridors. So Apache Junction's position would be, we need to have these, ADOT, you know, kind of goes at their own.
Right.
So, so it's a partnership to get there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Several years ago, when they were doing the scoping for the meeting, for the roadway improvements that have headed up to Tortilla Flats, the city did send a letter supporting adding some shoulder. Because when you think of a shoulder, it's not just for a bicyclist, but say you had something with your car, you got room to pull over, it also deals with pavement preservation. So what we heard was that the National Forest essentially wanted to take out some of the curves, et cetera, but they really weren't going to make any accommodations for bicyclists up there. And they, unfortunately, now that road's going to be like that for 20, 25 years. And so again, the city did comment saying, "Hey, you're going to have new pavement." Bicyclists are attracted to brand-new pavement, and I have ridden my bike to Tortilla Flats, and that was a rough ride. So, but anyway, it's, the state declined, along with Tano, to make more accommodations for bicyclists along that. So we're going to live with it for a long time.
And they made the shoulder so soft that you can't drive, pull off of it with, yeah. Your Honor? Yes.
This is for Joel. I sat on this meeting, the joint planning and zoning and parking rec, and I voted on this matter. Would this be something here tonight that I would be able to vote on?
Well, that question, that's an interesting question at this time, because you've sat and you've been in this, what, for a while? The question is, do you have a proprietary or pecuniary interest? And I think this is a bigger plan. This will go to the general plan at one point. If you don't feel comfortable voting because you have had other exposure, I mean, the same comments that, that I have heard tonight actually came up at the other two meetings where this was brought up. And yes, you did vote, however, it won't make a difference because that was, that was overwhelmingly a majority vote. So, and I don't think you have, you're not influencing anybody. I think this is not a conflict of interest.
And there's no financial gain or anything, so?
There's no financial gain, there's no proprietary or pecuniary interest, and that is the test.
All right, in order to speed us up, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item?
Oh, you have some maple here.
We have some here that, Rhonda Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor and Council. I-
We need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Rhonda Rome Baker, 4338 East Sixth Avenue, Apache Junction, 85119. I, too, am very concerned about the reduction of lanes on Superstition Boulevard. While the study that was done in May of that year said there were 6,000 vehicles per day, as you stated, in the wintertime, that's a great many more cars on that road. Also, with the proposed changes to Apache Trail, it's logical to assume that even more cars may choose to use Superstition Boulevard. In the plan, they talk about putting interblock, between intersection crossovers, which hopefully, if they're going to do that, they're going to put some kind of light, triggered light there. That will make even more stop-and-go on Apache Trail. So it would seem logical that more people will want to use Superstition Boulevard. So I can foresee, as our city grows, even more congestion. So I'm very concerned about that. As well as, case in point, I went to turn into the post office the other day. The turn lane, left turn lane to go onto Idaho was full, and the center turn lane was full, and I actually had to stop in a travel lane with my blinker on to get into the post office. So that really concerns me, if we reduce that to one lane. Concern about the firehouse, fire station being on that road and their ability to get out quickly and get to an emergency. If we have traffic congestion there in the wintertime, how will that impact them? So those are, I think, serious concerns that I hope the council will, will look at and consider before agreeing to restrict lanes on Apache, on Superstition Boulevard. One of the other things continually is brought up about the fatalities that have occurred with bicyclists and pedestrians. And it is tragic, and it's, it is very concerning. However, during that same time period, in the same area, there were approximately 45 automobile fatalities. So yes, we need to do something, but I'm concerned that restricting lanes could increase our automobile fatalities. So there's a lot to be considered, I think. And as he said, a lot more to be studied and analyzed before we move forward with something like that. The, there's also a proposal that lanes will be 11 feet wide. I couldn't find anything that told me how wide the lanes are now. We have a lot of Class A motorhomes that come in here in the wintertime. Those are wide with the rearview mirrors on either side. I'm not sure that an 11-foot-wide lane is going to give some of our more elderly drivers enough margin for error there. So that's a huge concern when we look at restricting lanes and reducing traffic lanes. So, and I do want to say also that there's a concern over the overall cost of this to the city. So, and I assume that's my time up.
You've got a minute.
I have one minute? Okay. The one element, the Apache Trail multi-lane boulevard, $14 million per mile. And I called City and Planning, or Zoning and Planning, and I was told that that's approximately five miles worth of, that they're going to be looking at. So I might understand that per mile, that one little element would be 70, I'm sorry, $70 million. So do we have that kind of money? And I understand it's a 10-year plan, but, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm not sure that's the best, that's a lot of money. And I would ask, maybe the council, maybe we could, need to revisit putting, getting, developing some sort of transit plan, transit van system for our disabled.
That's your red light.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Ken Baker?
Smart man.
Good evening. My name is Darla Cheeves, and I live at 1482 West Monobello Avenue in Apache Junction, 85120. I'm also a 65-year, full-time resident. Rhonda covers it all. She very aptly expressed in this article and on lane reductions in the now-proposed plan, in my opinion, is ludicrous to even suggest reduction. I am acquainted with a senior gentleman who was heavily involved as president of PNM Arena and S.H.A. at one time. He was also instrumental in the original plan installing fences and gate crossovers. He now asks, "What happened to the original plan?" It was supposed to include trails for bikes, hikers, and horses. Unfortunately, the fencing and gates were all that got completed. More importantly, they were to circumvent Apache Junction as a greenbelt, which makes more sense for hikers and bikers and horses. I would love to see more beautification in sidewalks and landscaping. There's a desperate need for that in Apache Junction. With the potential of public transportation, horse trailers, motorhomes, and increased population coming in the future, we need all the lanes and sidewalks we can get to ensure safety for everyone concerned. In conclusion, I ask that you reconsider exploration of the outer perimeter of Apache Junction. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Stuart Clark, 1255 North Sunset Road, Apache Junction. And my wife and I have visited this city for a couple of years in a row, and we bought a house here. And we did because we think that the opportunity that's here for bicycling, which is something that we like to do, is really fantastic. And I applaud the work that you've done on this active transportation plan. We're really happy to see it because the counties that are around here, as soon as we get into Mesa and these surrounding counties, the ability to use the, the way they've striped these lanes and the way they give bike lanes and where they, especially the way Mesa sets up specific bike routes. We don't plan on going down Apache Trail, our, the main Superstition Road on our, on our bike, because we can get down Adobe right now. And- on our bike, because we can get down Adobe right now and get right into Mesa. And it's just, this is a great area. And with the legacy loop that you have, and the, and the way this town is positioned around the Phoenix Valley, it seems to us that it's ideal, and that people could be attracted here. And they would, you know, one of the things that will attract them is to see that you are actively working on transportation plans like this one that's been proposed. And certainly, this isn't fixed or anything, what they're saying. I, we, we've seen these plans in the past, and once they're adopted, then people work harder and harder. But what, it gets people thinking about, okay, we're going to build a road, or hey, we're going to fix this road. What are we going to do in terms of striping? What, what can we do in terms of signage? So, one of the things that, that we can do immediately is to remind people in cars to share the road. So, when we do have a, a road in Apache Junction that is, doesn't have a bike lane, we can put up a sign that says, "Share the road." And it just sort of reminds people in cars like, okay, there's going to be, you know, when I get, when I come up on a cyclist, I really need to share the road and, and just kind of increase safety. I think, so, I commend you for the work you've done on this plan, and I, and we wholeheartedly hope that you accept this initial look at active transportation and join the rest of the counties in this valley, and think about this legacy loop, and think how people will be attracted to Apache Junction the same way we were attracted and came and bought a house. Because we, we keep thinking that, hey, this town has really got it going on. And in five or ten years, this could be a great, a place to, to do the type of things that people who use active transportation want to do. I don't have a horse. I wish I had a horse. I don't know how to ride a horse, but if I had one, this would be a great town to live in. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Darrell Cross, ten-eighteen North Acacia Road, Apache Junction. Thank you, City Council, for all your hard work, and, and thanks for taking a few minutes here. Regarding the transportation plan, Superstition Horsemen's Association overall agrees with a lot of the, the proposals that are put in there. I don't know if there's a way that you guys could accept the proposed plan with the, an exception to Superstition Boulevard being touched. We think of Superstition being our, our main thoroughfare for getting east and west inside the town. When the sixty is backed up because of an accident, we can bail off on the one-oh-one and come right down Superstition and come home without very many headaches. It's wonderful having it being four lanes, two in both directions. If you think about it, Scottsdale, even Scottsdale has a bypass around its downtown corridor just to move traffic around it. And, you know, if we take away Superstition, what do we have? Broadway's not available because it doesn't go all the way through, it kind of jigjags, and, and Lost Dutchman's single lane, both the directions. So, like I said, overall, I think Dean and his crew have done an outstanding job in making a proposal to you. And if there's a way that you can do it with an exception, we'd like to see that. I kind of see what they're saying, that, that, you know, this isn't in stone written for, that we have to follow it. But you see our concerns, you see the rest of the people's concerns, and I think a lot of you agree that, you know, touching Superstition Boulevard is, is not a good, even, even wasting money on paint and re-striping it, and then finding out six months later that you got to waste more paint and re-stripe it again. And when you re-stripe over something like that, you always see those stinking black marks that used to be a line, that's not a line. But when the sun shines on it just right, it's, you know, you get my drift. So, thank you very much, and let's see what happens.
Would anyone else like to speak on this? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any more discussion?
Your Honor, I think it's really, really important that folks realize that this is not cast in concrete. This is a suggested plan. I think that everyone in this room has heard all of the consternation regarding Superstition, and I'm reasonably sure that everyone in this room will take that into consideration when it gets to the point that Superstition is being constructed or deconstructed, or whatever it is they do to it. I think it's just really important that you understand, we are not passing something that we expect in five years, this, this, and this will be done in exactly the way that's in this booklet. We know better. We've been there and done that. Okay. Thank you.
Got one more thing. Yes. Just, I, the plan overall is pretty, is pretty well done. Pretty much agree with everything. The, the education side of it, the, that, you know, one of those E's, one of the six E's, I think is a very important one. And, and you cover it in there, but I think it really, really needs to be looked at. And I know it's hard to educate the public, especially when you talk about the socioeconomic makeup of our city. I, you know, I drive all over the valley with my business, and it's, it totally amazes me how many people jaywalk, and I don't know what you call it when you cross the street with your bike, but it, it just totally has amazed me. And, and, you know, I know from firsthand experience that, you know, most, a lot of the people that are in pedestrian and bicycle accidents by cars, it's generally, well, I'm not, I don't know what the percentage is, but it's a lot from jaywalking and going in the middle of the street. So, I just want to reiterate the E, the education portion of this plan, is to get out there, and we got to figure out a way to educate the public on, on how to interact with our motorized vehicles, our pedestrians and equestrian. Even, you know, we hear the stories about cars honking at horses, and just do all that part. And, you know, I think that's something that we really, really have to look at, not just on this plan, but overall. So, in five or six years, there could be a complete turnover on this council and a lot of staff. So, citizens might have to hold the council's feet to the fire if they do start to do things to Superstition that we don't like. So, I will call for a motion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that the active transportation plan is recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission be accepted, and that the active transportation plan be incorporated into the circulation element of the City of Apache Junction General Plan twenty-twenty to twenty-fifty, quote, legendary landscapes and lifestyles, end quote.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Well, I'm going to say, in the comment and in the aspect on it, overall, I'm going, I'm all for it. I'm going to say yes, but with the exception of the Superstition roadway. If I can do a half-negative and a half-positive.
No, we don't have half-votes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Same as Chip, yes, but leave Superstition at five lanes.
Is that a seven votes, Mr. City Attorney, or less than seven votes?
Well, half a seven is three and a half. So, so then it doesn't pass. But I, I think the comments that were made during the vote, I think, are considered just comments because it wasn't part of the motion. There wasn't a motion to amend. So, I'd say those, I'd say it would pass. Seven oh.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Presentation and discussion by Sharon Steiner of the Apache Junction Focal Point Committee to introduce ideas for the twenty-twenty-two, one-hundred-year Founder's Day celebration.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Sharon Steiner, and with me tonight is Jeff Danford, who is the event and volunteer coordinator at Superstition Mountain Museum, and Brayden Biggs, who is the community programs manager with United Way. And we are members of the Founder's Day Committee. We are bringing to council tonight a cause to celebrate. And so, on April twenty-first nineteen-twenty, or twenty-twenty-two, I should say, we will mark one hundred years that, since George Cleveland Curtis and his wife, Aurora, and their three daughters pitched a tent at the intersection of the new highway to Superior and Apache Trail that was previously there and led to the Roosevelt Dam. And this area is currently near where our focal point is now. The Curtis family made their livelihood by selling water and sandwiches to the travelers along that route. And thanks to the tenacity of George Curtis, the name Apache Junction replaced Youngsburg. That name came from George Young, who was an ex-mayor of Phoenix and the owner of the Mammoth Mine, which is four, four miles east of AJ. George Curtis didn't think that was the right name for the community because it lacked character, color, and charm. So, we became Apache Junction. In nineteen-thirty-eight, Curtis convinced the Dons of Arizona to erect a monument marking the spot of AJ's beginning, and it is there still today. The Founder's Day Committee, chaired by Brayden, envisioned opportunities to commemorate the founding of AJ throughout the year. We are encouraging each event sponsored by city departments, service organizations, and the business community to incorporate the Founder's Day theme. So, Jeff, I'm going to turn it over to you for a few minutes.
Gee, thanks, Sharon. The Focal Point Committee is actually working on this, putting it together. The museum is going to play a large role, and we've already been, we've discussed it. We're already looking forward to playing a major role. We have a lot of archival material. We're willing to let, lend to the, lend to it. The museum itself is planning on making some of our events tied in with this to, to help promote it and to, you know, play our role as part of the historical society. This is part of our job and part of our mandate. So, we're looking forward to getting involved in it, and we will be very heavily involved in it. And I've got a cold right now, and I'm feeling like about that big, so.
Thanks. Thanks, Jeff. So, we're looking at also commemorative memorabilia, which may, which is being considered as a way to raise funds, to underwrite any activities that we might want to devise. But also, we'd like to produce a video. And the funds for that video could look more like an investment in our community and in the history of Apache Junction for generations to come. I think the cost would not be prohibitive, as nearby communities have done this very thing, and the residents are very proud of their community whenever they get a chance to view the video. We are also welcoming donations from private citizens and sponsors, and the planning committee is hoping to enlist the help of community organizations or the city, and organizations like Friends of AJ in that effort. We foresee that the year-long celebration of AJ's founding in twenty-twenty-two will promote our community's local attractions and our businesses. So, we're glad to bring to your attention this evening the opportunity for the community to celebrate one hundred years of its founding and pay tribute to the vision of the Curtis family. We also want to recognize the past and present city leaders, the business community, our schools, and volunteers, who during those one hundred years continued to have moved Apache Junction forward into a future of opportunity and prosperity. So, twenty-twenty-two will be here before we know it, and we want to be ready to make it a year of remembrance and celebration, one for the history books. Thank you.
Can we ask questions like a work session, or? Yes. Presentation? Any questions?
Sharon, can you tell us if a business organization or whatnot group would like to participate and do something in particular, some type of event, or how would they, who do they contact? How do they get in touch? Who did, how do they do that? How do they become a part of this?
Certainly. The focal point meets regularly at the Chamber of Commerce, and Brayden Biggs can give you some contact information so that, because he's our point person.
So, I, of course, will give you my number and way to contact me, but as far as, we're, we're still working to develop some of that aspect as well. And we'll be reaching out to business communities, nonprofits, the city staff, and other agencies and entities throughout the community to get them involved. So, we do really want to make this a collaborative across everybody. It's not just one thing. We, we want the entire community to really celebrate its heritage.
So, Brayden, is there, if for somebody that might be watching, though, is there a way, does, do you have an email?
If you give that number now, it'll be recorded, and it'll be on the website.
So, my cell phone number is five-seven-three, five-eight-six, eight-seven, eight-seven. And I will provide that to city staff as well.
And you, and Sharon, you said that to donate to friends, they're already can take funds for this?
Well, in the past, Friends of AJ have been fiscal agents for committee, committees like ours, where we, since we're not a five-oh-one C-three, we'd like to be able to offer to the sponsors and donors that opportunity for tax write-off.
So, how do they separate? Like, if there's just five hundred dollars comes in, they would have to specify that they want it to go towards?
Yes, yes. I've been involved with Volunteer Center of Pinell County, and we've served as a fiscal agent for other activities and events. And that's exactly what happens. You earmark it, and it's designated funds. It's not incorporated or blended in with the organization's coffers.
Anyone else? So, Brayden, we can contact you anytime between six in the morning and midnight, or?
I'm awake, yes. So, yeah. And, and the other piece to that is, we are working with Sky Seven and Smurba with Mike Lamb to establish a website and get that up and running. And then we are working on some social media pages as well. And then we'll be working with Al Bravo and PIO with the staff to get that information out as much as possible. So, a lot of this is still in development. We just kind of wanted to present the idea and then gain interest moving forward, so.
And then we're looking at, it's the year of two thousand twenty-two, from January first through December thirty-first, or?
That's right.
Correct.
And is there, and did you say there's an actual founding day? Is there an actual?
August twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Yep. And so, we, our, our overall goal and hope is that events throughout the year are, are tailored for our Lost Dutchman Days, has the theme of Founder's Day, and working with the city staff, the chamber. I know CAFSA does their five-K run, you know, the school district has any events that they do. We really want to incorporate all of those into that and, and make it a universal, across-the-board, unity-wide. Twenty-twenty-two is something to do with Founder's Day.
And that's April twenty-first?
August.
Not August.
August twenty-first.
I had, oh, well, then I stand corrected.
Well, they're both A's. August, April, they're both A's.
Yeah. It's the twenty-first of twenty-twenty, and one of those days.
One of those days. Yeah, sorry.
So, Bryant, council, obviously, we just can't vote money. I mean, that has to come out of the budget. So, that's just something where you try to squeeze something here and there, if it's possible, and?
So, certainly, this is three years-ish, or plenty of time for council to lay out priorities. And if it's a council priority, we communicate it through the budgetary process. And depending on where y'all want to go, then, then we, we don't necessarily squeeze it. We just place it in the budget, and we, we compete against different priorities that are out in the community. And if it's one that, that makes council-
I do think economic development-wise, it would show, I mean, if the more this thing gets out there, the more it would highlight the city, and it would be picked up. And I saw the one that Queen Creek did, which they did a really good job, but our Queen Creek council folks left. It's kind of, kind of boring out there compared to our history. I mean, we could do a fantastic history here and get that all into, onto a, a disc somehow.
So, I heard different elements, right, that were here, and some of it sounds like it would be picked up by nonprofit and-
Yeah.
-private sector, and there'll be parts, the government may want to participate, and that's the video part or whatever. We can, we can certainly start talking about it.
I know some of, like, Republic Services helps and SRP. It'd be nice if they could kick in, Waste Management, people like that, so.
The idea here is, instead of having one group put on the celebration, is to try to incorporate, make it an entire community-wide. We're all nonprofits- We're all nonprofits, the businesses, the world, the government world, everybody pitches together and makes this one big event that we can all be proud of.
So are you saying like kind of as part of the Founder's Day Parade?
For the whole year.
Yeah. That could be part of the theme that we're already kind of doing and just?
I just heard somebody say for the whole year. Yes, we're actually anticipating having events throughout the entire year that will focus on different parts of it, and then maybe something leading up to the actual date, and then we kind of taper down from there. But we're looking at a year-long celebration. We have a lot of events going on now through the town. I mean, everybody's got, we've got Festival of Superstitions, we've got Lost Dutchman Days, the museum has several events. If we can try to incorporate some of those events into it and carry the theme, this will be a community-wide event rather than just one group.
And I do know Liz Leggenbach, the Parks and Recreation Director, has been a part of the conversations through Focal Point and Tourism, and that's, you know, with, with a lot of the citywide events and things in that nature. So her and her staff are working to make sure that that is the year that those are going to be incorporated in that theme, because they, they set their themes about a year in advance for that. And then, you know, working with the nonprofit community, I mean, all three of us work in a nonprofit in some sector. So having those kinds of relationships to be able to go to them, you know, utilizing the council's leverage with the business community or the school district, city staff with the other community members and things to really make this a community-wide event. Like Jeff said, this isn't just one group, one event, one time throughout the year. It is a year-long celebration that we want to really utilize to put Apache Junction on the map again for the state of Arizona.
With the right marketing and outreach, we can reach out to the other communities and let people know this is what's going on in Apache Junction. Once we get them into the town, this focuses attention on the town, and then it's, hey, look what we got, you know? So part of this would not only be the celebrations themselves, but doing the town up in such a way that we, we tell people, hey, you're here now, look what we have, and entice them to come back more often. And make Apache Junction a destination place.
Sounds exciting.
Brayden, would you repeat your phone number before you leave, please?
Yes, 573.
Oh, that's where I went wrong. 73, yeah.
So 573-586-8787.
No emails. No email yet?
They would be my personal ones. So we're working to establish a group one so that if something?
You said there's going to be a website, so?
Yeah, there's, there is going to be a website, and there, there's currently already a Facebook page. It's just not public and published yet, so we're working on that piece as well. So we will have that.
Your Honor, yes. So when, when you're talking about this year-long event, are you like suggesting kind of insituating, like our current events, like during, like the FOT or the Fourth of July or the Easter egg hunt? Are you suggesting, you know, every other weekend, throw something together?
No, we're talking about using the, the events that are already existing within our structure. We have a lot of events going on all year round. There's no reason to create a lot of new events. Take the same events we already have now and use them to focus on, on this event, on this idea.
If something was to be created, some of the things that we've thrown around is like having a business do, or like the museum potentially even doing like, you know, going through the scrapbooks or the photo albums and things, so people can really look at the history. I think there's so much rich history that people don't know about our community or the area over 100 years ago. What did Apache Junction look like 100 years ago when they settled here? What, what did, what did it look like 50 years ago? What does it look like today? So there's a wide range of things that we're looking to encompass into potentially a small new event to what we're already doing.
Okay. Thank you. Hopefully, it gets on everybody's radar and the newspapers, yes. Okay, we could, we're going to take a short recess.
Presentation, discussion, and possible consideration of Resolution 1833, extinguishment of some roads on Pioneer and Smoke Tree. Raquel.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Raquel Shep, project engineer for Public Works Department, here this evening to discuss road extinguishment. Oops. Resolution 1833 for road segments of Acacia Road from Pioneer Street to Smoke Tree Street, and also Pioneer Street from Cortez Road to Acacia Road. Very briefly, it's been quite a while since I've been up here to discuss extinguishments, so I just thought I'd quickly just do a quick, brief background. So basically, back in 1938, the Bureau of Land Management, back then, dedicated these easements to all the cities and the towns, and they surround the five and also the two and a half acre parcels dedicating right-of-way in, in whits of 33 feet. And they go around the boundary, boundaries of all the said lands. The reservations of these right-of-way along the boundaries of the lands ensured that no individual parcel would be landlocked and/or without legal access to their land. Also, with these federal pan-easements, also known as FPEs, the city considers these FPEs to the same restrictions as other types of public right-of-ways, that, in which that no permanent structures may be constructed within the FPE, and that the parcel building setback lines are to be measured from this line. All right, now for the fun stuff. Before you is a one-mile square map bounded by Tomahawk to the west, Goldfield to the east, Superstition Boulevard, and Lost Dutchman Boulevard. This is a single federal pan-easement application made by a citizen. The applicant met with the staff for the purposes of the alleviating setbacks due to the majority of his properties being in the floodplain. So in the picture in front of you or above, the yellow shows the proposed extinguishment. Then you see the highlighted red. Those are the already extinguished roadways, and the greens are the dedicated right-of-ways. So what we're trying, we're proposing here is both to the east and to the west of Pioneer Street, those roads have already been extinguished many years ago. So the owner, the single applicant, he has contacted all the adjacent and abutting neighbors in which they both have signed the petition and also provided the city with Proposition Documents were prepared by staff, and they were circulated to all the public and private utility companies. They were also submitted to emergency correspondence and to other city staff in which no opposition was, has been received. So Public Works Department recommends approval. Any questions?
Any discussion?
I have one question. So the roads that are being abandoned, is there a proposed home to be built?
Yes.
Or?
So?
I just didn't see anything on the map.
Yeah, currently not right now, so I don't know, can you? Okay, so it's kind of hard to see. But this parcel above Pioneer, that is owned by also the, it's the same applicant as the one across the street, across the easement of it. So they've, they've got this small area up here to build a house on, which I believe they might already have a house on there. And the same here with this one here, too. So he's trying to build a house here in the corner, but to alleviate these setbacks would mean he'd have a little bit more area there to, to put his house here. He hasn't been through building permits or anything else to build his house. He's trying to plan, and so he can get, so he can figure out which direction he wants to put his house. But currently, right now, you can kind of see the outline of the floodplain. You can see how much of it, that it does take as parcel property land. So that's the purpose of extinguishing. Talking to other divisions inside of Public Works, because of how big this wash is, the city would have to install culverts in order to put, put a through roadway in there, and that is a little costly right now.
Any more questions? We'll call for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Resolution Number 18-33, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, approving extinguishments on portions of public roadway easements located on Acacia Road from Pioneer Street to Smoke Tree Street and Pioneer Street from Cortez Road to Acacia Road be approved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration and discussion on removing two board members from two different boards. Councilmember Evans.
All righty. This is kind of a continuation from our meeting last year in December. Councilmember Waldron had brought this to our attention, followed by a statement that truly concerned me, made in our call to the public by Frank Scheinbeck, who is the Chair of Board of Adjustments. From the information that he learned in going to the conference, he, for the first time, had realized that Board of Adjustment people need to basically be in a bubble, as not to have any biases to items coming before Board of Adjustments. And as I thought about this and thought about this, this is, the city, for the first time in its history, has a planning and zoning lawsuit against us. It's a loss that we can't talk about, but, but it's been going on. We received a 34-page basic synopsis from the city attorney of everything from the beginning to current. We're in kind of a unique spot here. This has never happened before, and for these two individuals, I feel that the city hadn't done an adequate job in necessarily training. We, we haven't had this come up. And as I thought more and more about it, it concerned me that are we doing enough in our training with the CLI and different conferences? Should we make this a mandatory meetings? Mr. Kreidler was signed up to go to the conference and, for whatever reason, did not go. He also did not go to CLI. So have we done the best job in not only protecting the city and our stance on ordinances, but have we also done an adequate job in making sure that people on our boards and commissions are fully trained in what is acceptable and what is not acceptable? What could cause problems that they would have a perceived or definite bias towards an applicant, either through friendship, through volunteer, through working, things on Facebook? You know, I don't think we've done an adequate job, but we have this situation in front of us, a very important decisive lawsuit in front of us, that both of these individuals who are very closely connected to the plaintiff, are we assured that it would be an unbiased decision on how they vote? It's kind of multifaceted as far as what have we done, as far as the education piece being, this is the very first time we've actually been in this situation. And so I thought, you know, I don't, I didn't really like the idea of just removing someone from a board or commission, because we're happy to have volunteers who are willing to step forward for the city. And that's when I thought of the idea, well, if they would recuse themselves from all of their public appearances that they've had here, what they've had on their Facebook accounts, if they would just recuse themselves from voting on issues involving the hitching post, then I'd love to keep them there. But, but that would be, have to be a personal decision from them. Would they recuse themselves or be removed from their current boards and commissions? So with that?
Your Honor?
Okay, I have, I have a lot to say on it, too, but I'll let Krista go or Robin.
Thank you. All right, this came up in December. We talked about it. We hashed it over. We instructed staff to please send the minutes to the two folks that were, were discussed at that meeting. We asked the city attorney, who said, training sessions with Rudy, Larry, and newly appointed members, where they were cautioned to avoid applicants during the pendency of proceedings in any case. He mentions other training. He mentions talking to them about perception of conflict of interest, et cetera, et cetera. So there are two or three different things, plus the training, and, and I truly do not understand why you can't be friends with someone and still be on a board. That bothers me. That bothers me a lot. Now, Mr. Biggs did, in fact, communicate with the attorney for the plaintiff. He may not have known it with the attorney. He may have been discussing the price of toilet paper in Alaska. I don't know. And nobody knows. So it is up to Mr. Biggs whether he realizes that this is probably a perceived conflict of interest. People are probably saying, mm, you know, what were they talking about? And if he is honest about it, I think he'll see that as a perceived conflict of interest, and he would probably choose to recuse himself. As far as Mr. Kreidler is concerned, I don't know who he's friends with and who he's not friends with. I don't have any, I don't have any grounds to say this person should write this missive to the Development Services Department swearing not to vote on matters. If, if he has a close friendship with a person on whom, on an issue that he is voting on, he has been told by the city attorney what perception of, of conflict of interest is, et cetera, et cetera, and he should recuse himself. I don't know that. I have no facts to back any of this. I can't go along with this at all.
Krista?
Sorry. I would reiterate almost identically what Robin had just stated. We're, we're talking about a lot of ifs, a lot of maybes, a lot of unknowns. I don't know that there has been any violation. These two people obviously are not going to be making any decision in the court with this lawsuit that you're talking about. And so for me, I'm just going to say this in about the nicest way I can say this. This is, in my opinion, this really feels, it feels like a, a really mean way to treat our board members. If, to, to my knowledge, there has not been an issue that has come up with board members' conflict of interest in the past, but I would hope that this council does not set the precedence by treating our board members in this manner if there is any kind of a perceived conflict. I would hope that we would have a better way of handling the situation of treating people that are volunteers on our board. We already have a difficult time getting people to step up and volunteer, and if, you know, if people see this, and it feels like a lambasting, and if people on our board see that if there's a perceived issue, the first thing we're going to do is put it on a city council agenda and blast them out here in the public, then I think we're going to have trouble getting people on our boards. I don't want this to be the way that we treat our board members. There's got to be a better way. We don't know exactly what Robin said. We don't have any facts here. I don't know who knows who, who's talked to who, who bumped into who. We have a small community. Everybody talks to everybody. I feel that if there's an issue that comes to the attention of, of the board president or the city council or somebody in the, in the staff, that there may be a conflict that we have, that we can handle it a little bit better, maybe approach the, the board president? Maybe approach the board president, then talk with the city manager and the city attorney, and have them talk with this individual on a board, and first determine if the reason even is a conflict. Absolutely, let's get some training. Let's make sure this doesn't happen again. But let's not handle a situation with our board members like this again either.
Chip?
Yeah, I'm just going to ask a question, and the idea is, does, you know, if we, as, I'm going to say, staff or as a government body that find out that there is a conflict in the aspect on it, it's addressed at that time? And the aspect is when they would have a conflict? Is that correct? And I'm asking Joel.
Mr. Wilson, Mayor. Well, if someone brings you some information and you think there's something to it, yes, you could call, you could have a meeting or you could ask the city manager or myself to talk to the chair. I mean, that could be done. It depends what the violation was, or if maybe there wasn't a violation. Maybe it's just an appearance of impropriety. When we come to a lawsuit issue, it does get more complicated. And there's other people watching this case. It's not just the city and the plaintiff. There's neighbors involved. And if there's a perceived conflict and the neighbors don't like the outcome of the lawsuits, they could actually, they could also be involved in another lawsuit. It's possible. But to answer your question, yes, it could be handled in that manner where someone would be approached and they'd be, the board member would be asked, "Well, what do you, what happened here?" So that could be done. As for training, I train with Larry and Rudy. We do that every time there's a new set of board members. I also come to the meetings and do a presentation. In fact, Larry scheduled me. He didn't tell me. It was kind of the 11th hour, but that's okay. I don't mind. We're going to be doing it next Tuesday night. And it'll be on open meeting law, conflicts of interest, Public Records Act. And also, I added a new one. And I was asked to do this right after the election, to do it in six months, so I'm doing it. It's parliamentary procedure. So I have a document that has that information in it. And in fact, I'm working on it now to final for tomorrow, so they go in the packet for planning and zoning. And also do it with other commissions, the bigger commissions. Park and Rec, although Liz never invites me to that. Is she gone? Yeah, she's gone. But I'll be happy to go to that one. Also, Library Board, Board of Adjustment. I can do, as long as there's no pending items. And also, the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So I heard Mrs. Evans say several times that we haven't done a good enough job in training. So, kind of scolding the council. So not so much the fault of the, of the boards. And it looks like we are going to remedy that. We are going to have better training now and take care of that. And we are a very small town. I mean, even though there's 40,000 people there, there's only about 2,000 people that are actually involved in politics and vote. And we need a wide cross-section on these boards. When you get to start, we're so small and we start recusing ourselves. I've bought air conditioners off of Robert. Krista has worked on my vehicles. So you're going to have that in a town. And restaurants, I try to go to every restaurant in town. And if I don't, the restaurants that I'm not going to get mad at me. "How come you don't come to my restaurant?" So I spread it around and go to every one of them. And so that gives me a feel on them. And so, yeah, I don't think, it almost feels like trying to stack things to try to get votes. We don't want unanimous votes on every issue. I mean, you've got to have dissenting voices, and you do need a wide, wide cross-section. Jeff or Chip, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to address the, this particular individual issue that hears, but I'm just going to address what we are here for. The very basic purpose of government, especially for the city council, when you get up into higher governments, it's different. But especially city council, the basic purpose of a government in our, is to basically decide on any given issue whose liberties are more important than somebody else's liberties. It's just that basic. We get all kinds of planning and zoning issues. We get parks and, you know, anything that two people or two individuals or two entities are involved, we have to decide whose liberties are more important. And so we, as elected officials up here on the council, we are given that authority by the citizens to make that determination. And in turn, because of what we do, we get to appoint boards and commission members to take over some of those authorities, to make some of those decisions for us. But something that is very important when you come to that is you just don't have authority, you have responsibility. And the responsibility is to take into consideration all the facts that pertain to any particular issue that you're trying to decide on. And we, the citizens, the citizenry entrust in us that we're going to be fair and that they can trust us. And we are going to be as, as, show as little bias as possible that we can on making those decisions. And in turn, we pass those same things down to our boards and commission members to do that. Obviously, there's no way that anybody can be totally unbiased on any issue, because like, you know, everybody says, "This is a small town and we all know each other." We all, you know, we mostly, we know where people live. We've all been in each other's businesses. We probably go to events together, all this kind of stuff. But it's very incumbent upon us, as the city council, and all the people that we appoint to the boards and commissions, to do everything possible to remain fair, trustworthy, and as little biased as possible. And if, and it's got to be, it's going to be left up to each one of us up here and each of our board members and commission members to decide on their own as to, on any particular issue, if they can truly make a decision on that issue without, while being fair, trustworthy, and unbiased, or as little biased as possible. And if they truly feel that they can't, then they need to excuse themselves from those votes and any discussions. And we rely on it, we, us, the city council members, rely on our board members and commission members to do just that. We have the ability, you know, most boards and commissions come up for vote or reappointment, I guess, generally every four years, I guess. One of them is every six years. And that is where we get to decide if the person is worthy enough to stay on the board and commission. It's kind of, it really has to be a drastic, and there again, I don't, you know, we live in America. We have a system of laws and torts, whatever you want to call all that legal jargon. But, you know, we can't convict somebody until an actual crime is committed. And, and just like this, it's hard to to do a judgment upon somebody until there is a something that they have, that we don't think that is right. And so all I'm asking is, is to everybody that's on a board and commission, and even on the council, on any given issue, just to think about that. Can they truly be fair, just, and as little biased on any decision? And then they got to decide on whether they're going to excuse themselves from the vote.
Any more discussion?
I just wanted to say something. This was not, and if I came off that way, I apologize. This was not a scold to the council. I was trying to point out the fact that we are bigger now. Things are changing. We have to step up to the plate. Yes, our city attorney sits down with everybody. For me, you know, I talked with you one time. I was on P&amp;Z for six years. Did I remember everything? No. I mean, you can't. It has to be a renewal, just like renewing classes, which I think is part of what we need to be doing with what we're going to talk about with the parliamentary procedure and all of that. That's where I think we haven't done an adequate job. And as far as, I'm not convicting anybody. That's not the purpose of this. It was a discussion on what is appropriate. And I'm sorry, I'm not on the Facebook blog, but you go on there. It's all over there. These two individuals love doing that, and they have every right to do that. We, as a council, just have to make sure of who is voting on a very, very significant lawsuit, that we have unbiased people. And that is my point.
It gives the option here to ask for a motion. Does anyone want to make a motion on this? So it looks like there's not going to be a motion, so I think we just move on, right, Joel?
Yep. Yes.
And we will work on the training. And that's going to be an ongoing thing. And I think the things are going to be better and the standards will come up on that. So that's great. Consideration of nomination and selection of vice mayor as required by city code. Kathy Conley.
Thank you, Your Honor. My part's real quick. It's your part that could take a while, depending on how many times or how many individuals you want to nominate. City code requires that when a new council is seated, such as has happened tonight, you're obligated to select somebody from amongst your members as a vice mayor. And this is not one of your normal procedures. It's the Roberts Rules nomination procedure, which starts with somebody making a nomination. Well, actually, Mr. Mayor, you have a, you have a process under which you have to call for things in a certain manner. You have to, such as announce the item, ask for nominations. And if you go through the whole, whole process, what I have down here is the step-by-step vice mayor selection process. And actually, on, well, you don't have a green page anymore, I don't think.
I have a different type. I think it's all here.
But I've given you all the steps in order for you to get through this process. There's no second necessary when somebody nominates an individual. You can nominate as many people as you want. And then when it comes to the vote, I will take them in the order in which they were offered. And the first person who receives a majority is selected as vice mayor.
And there's no half votes?
That's right.
Okay, so the first thing I have to do is, I have to call for a motion to open nominations. And I'm doing that.
So moved?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, so now we have a motion to call for motions.
Let me, you have to take a roll call vote on this.
Okay, roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor. This is your first introduction to the Roberts Rules.
So now I'm going to ask, are there any nominations for vice mayor?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we reelect current vice mayor Chip Wilson again for our vice mayor.
Okay, are there any, are there any other nominations?
No.
Are there any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close the nominations?
One more time, you didn't say it three times.
I asked first time, she answered the first time.
Okay.
Right? So that was three. But I'll ask one more time, are there any other nominations?
You don't want to have this overturned.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember, actually Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
No other motions, I guess, yes.
That's to close nominations. And now you can proceed to a vote on the nomination for the continuation as vice mayor for Chip Wilson.
Okay. We're now going to do the same thing for acting mayor. Do you want to explain what acting mayor is?
Acting mayor is, I think this is only the second time we've done this. In the event both the mayor and the vice mayor are absent and there's a need to have somebody act in that capacity, whoever is selected as acting mayor would step into that role. I think we've had one or two instances where both the mayor and vice mayor were gone, not just, not in the city, but literally gone out of state. So if there were an emergency, this acting mayor would step in.
Okay. Do I have a motion to open nominations?
Well, we still need to have a motion.
Need a vote on Chip.
On Chip.
Oh, I thought we did.
We have a motion and a second, but we need a vote.
Okay. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes. Vote for myself.
Councilmember Struble?
I guess, yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Should I have sustained it myself?
Do I have a motion to open nominations for acting, position of acting mayor?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Are there any nominations for acting mayor?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll nominate Mr. Schroder. Councilman Schroder.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? I'm going to go four times, are there any other nominations?
Your Honor? I'll nominate Robin Barker for acting mayor.
Okay. All right, do I have any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close the nominations?
Your Honor, so moved.
Roll call.
For what?
This is to close the nominations.
Close nominations, you need a motion and a second.
I made the motion.
And who made the second?
I made the second.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
We're voting to close the...
This is to close nominations.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
So we're going to now have a roll call vote on Councilmember Schroder?
That's correct.
Yes.
That would be the first one. Councilmember Rizzi?
Only because I think Robin has been doing this previously, I'm going to vote no, no offense, but I'm just voting to keep the same. So my vote is no.
Okay. Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Uh, no. For myself, what the heck?
Councilmember Struble?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
No, and for the same reason Krista stated.
Councilmember Schroder?
No.
Mayor Sertie?
So I like everybody, I'll vote yes.
Two in favor, five oppose the motion, fails, Your Honor.
Do we have a roll call on Councilmember Barker?
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Consideration of designation of city council check signatories. Kathy, will you explain?
Yeah, this is the last procedural one we have to do this evening, Your Honor. Since this is a transition in council, one of the things we're required to do for our banking institutions and other accounts is clarify who are the legal signers on behalf of the city. And it will carry forward also to the water district. The recommendation has always been that there be two representatives from the city council. I'm the other check signer. So at this point in time, you can nominate who you want those check signers to be. Currently, it's the mayor and the vice mayor. If you choose to nominate the vice mayor, please use the title of Councilmember Wilson, because that's the title under which he was elected.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Any discussion on that, or just want to...
Yeah, we need to stick with the vice mayor or Councilmember Chip Wilson. And is he a... is he a mayor now, or a council member? Because he was first elected as a council member also.
But no, but he is, he was elected as mayor, so that is his, that is his title.
Okay, Councilmember Wilson and Mayor Sertie.
I would agree for consistency. I can't see any reason to change.
Yeah. And folks that stay, that don't travel a lot and they're always around town is good. So, so do we have a motion?
Your honor.
Yes.
I move that Mayor Jeff Sertie and Councilmember Chip Wilson be designated as check signers on the city accounts in addition to the city clerk.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor.
Council direction to staff, consideration discussion for creating a code of conduct applicable to council, boards, and commission members. This is Gail Evans again.
This is part of everything I've been thinking about for the last month. Many of the cities, due to the fact we were a city, there was, when we became a city, there was no internet or Facebook. There was no means of communications like that before. Many cities and counties have had to go to, to set in similar codes of conduct as part of the city direction for the boards and that. And the city used to have one. And I had, Kathy had pulled up the one that we used to have. Joel had provided one that the city at Glendale had, which was really comprehensive. But they are a charter city, correct? So some of it wouldn't work. And I'd like to give direction to staff, if everyone's agreeable, to look into this, to see what other, or what we would like to have as a code of conduct for us.
Your honor?
Yes.
You know, we tried this about four years ago. I got shot down big time because everybody felt that their mama, and I'm quoting two people, had already taught them well enough. I think this is part of our professional growth. We are no longer a baby city. We are growing. We want to be considered professional throughout our county and throughout our state. This is part of being professional. I would definitely feel that this is something that we should do. I think it will be good for, for everybody concerned.
So we would look at several drafts on this and then we would study it and look at it?
Yes.
Yeah, I would, I would think so. Yeah, there, things come up. I remember one thing I didn't like on there was the use of cell phones. I mean, that's changed. I mean, when cell phones first came out and you went to a meeting and you saw somebody on it, you were like, oh my God, that guy's on his phone over there, he's not even paying attention. Now it's kind of commonplace that you're kind of not doing your job unless you're checking in on different things on the cell phone. And I see that everywhere I go, so.
I hope not. I hope you're wrong. I think it's rude.
Every, every board that I go to, I mean, there's people just checking in. They're, they're talking to their staff. And so, things like that should be addressed, but not banned, you know, so.
I'd also like to know if the League of Cities has something.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that. Yeah. But I know when I was reaching out to Gold Canyon, I had a council member that was, you know, working against me, contacting people out there on their blogs. And I didn't like that either. So we're all free citizens, but yes, it is, it is not good to, to work against ourselves up here when, when they, they didn't even know what I was trying to do with Gold Canyon. So, so any more discussion?
Is that a motion?
Then we'll ask for a motion.
I move that the following, following direction be given to staff on creating a code of conduct applicable to the city council boarding commission members begin. Start.
Start. Yeah. Start a draft and so that you can start reviewing it. Yep. Okay, I heard two seconds there. So, roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor.
Presentation, discussion, and possible council direction to staff on proposed ordinance 1469, amending city code with fees. Larry?
Mayor, council members, Larry Kirsh, Director of Development Services. We had two council work sessions on this last year. And many of these fees haven't been updated for 12 years. As you might know, a couple of them we did in 2016. However, we did receive direction to staff to go work on this. What this is asking is, or this motion, if you pass it, would that we would have a public hearing on March 19th and that we would post the proposed fees that we had presented a couple weeks ago at a work session. We have to post them on the city website for 60 days. And then we'd come back at a public hearing on March 19th. So that's all I have. I'll spare you any presentation.
Any discussion? We'll call for a motion.
I move that the following direction be given to staff regarding proposed ordinance number 1469, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume 1, Chapter 4, fees repealing Article 4-4 in its entire entirety and adopting new provisions to replace these noted above. That staff present a final proposed ordinance based on the draft provided to council on January 15th, 2019, including any changes deemed necessary by the city attorney, and bring it back for a public hearing and vote on March 19th, 2019.
Second.
Roll call.
You need the last.
Oh, and I further move that staff take all actions necessary to meet the legal requirements of ARS 9-499 dot 15 regarding notification of this pending action.
Now I second.
Now we have a second. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes, what was the date again? That, they're bringing that?
March 19.
19?
Yep.
Thank you. Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor.
Do we have a motion on upcoming meeting dates?
Your honor?
Yes.
I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM on Monday, February 4th, 2019 be held in the city council conference room and the city council chambers, 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor.
And the next date?
Your honor, I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM for Tuesday, February 5th, 2019 be held in the city council conference room and the city council chambers, 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor.
Joel, in the future, could we look and see if we could roll both of those motions into one?
Please. They used to be one. I know Kathy disagrees, but I know they work.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. This is a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Each speaker must have already filled out a request to speak form and handed it to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly and/or place this matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit. I have two. First one is Jason, Jason Sinelli. And we'll need your address.
Hi, good evening. My, my name is Jason Sinelli. I live at 2571 South Acacia Road. I am a county resident and a county island within the city limits. So I'm just north of the freeway. I live directly east of the Mountain View Lutheran Church. I don't know if everyone realizes this, but there's a new sign that they've installed. And I know it wasn't their intention to light up the sky, but that's exactly what's happened. They have been kind enough to come to my house and meet with us. But I wanted to bring it to the attention of the council that this sign is there. My wife, my father-in-law homesteaded his home in 61 years ago where I live. I have a map that I'd love to donate for this party on the 2022. It's from 1967. It shows J. Bardi Road. That's where I live, Acacia Road now. Anyway, make a long story short, we've been enjoying our view, that everyone does, here. And I moved here 27 years ago from Tempe to live in Apache Junction, bought my home. I just bought another two and a half acres. So those roadway easements that you're abandoning, that happened for us years ago. So just want it to be addressed. I'd like to find out if the city has ordinances about the signs that are put up here, how bright they are. I don't want the U. Members to ever have kind of this situation where the view of our mountain is just bright. I, I don't know if I'm allowed to show pictures, but I did print some. This is my backyard.
I believe you could. Could we, do we still have, we don't have the overhead anymore, do we?
Yeah. All right. So this is my backyard. And with this brightness, I'm gonna move it over. How's that? Okay. This is the, the new sign. You can see the mountain there. This is with my floodlights on. This is zoomed in on that sign. You can still see the mountain kind of in the background there. This is the sign after it turns red, and it changes colors. Not as bad. They changed it for us. They did, they did change it. So it doesn't flash as much. And this is when I really zoomed in on it. And you can see that sign. The one thing that my wife and I have been able to do over the years from our porch is look at the mountain. We could see hikers coming down. Our son was on a hike across the top. He flashed our house with a flashlight. We could see where he was. We have helped 911 direct helicopters. And so I can't, I have not seen one hiker on that mountain since the lights been on. And I'd like it reviewed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Shainbeck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, Frank Shainbeck, 525 East Fred Avenue, Apache Junction. I'm here tonight representing Apache, Mountain View Lutheran Church. We have heard about some concerns regarding our recently approved sign. And I did visit with Mr. Sinelli and his family last Wednesday evening to see their after dark point of view. It was pretty educational. He's not understating the impact on their lives. That it was not our intention to do so. On the following Friday, I did go back and I saw the situation in daylight. So I could see the lay of the land also between their house and our, our sign. Since the Wednesday visit, we made some changes in the display, which I've been told are somewhat, somewhat reduce the negative impact, but there's more room for improvement. We are installing a sensor on the sign, which will cause the sign to change as regarding the ambient light. So on a sunny day, when it turns cloudy, the sign will dim. This was a $2,000 add-on that we're right now in the process of installing. The sign is a work in progress. We are continuing to understand its capabilities. The things we are considering is right now, when the slides change, they change with the flash. It's instant. You know, the Ken Burns effect where one fades into the other, that's what we want to do with that sign. I, I've been in communication with Larry as regarding the legality of that, and he assures me it is. We also are considering turning the display off or making it very dim during the, the late night hours. Our chances of netting anybody for our church at 2:00 in the morning are actually pretty dim. So the sign could match that dimness. And also, he didn't mention it directly, but there is some reflection off that sign against the mountain, believe it or not. And we can perhaps contain that with some landscaping. We'll be looking into that. We celebrated the completion of the sign. Believe me, there was a lot of time and money gone into that sign. And now we hate to hear that others are cursing it because of the impact in their lives. That is no means our intention. We expected some feedback, but we didn't think we'd have anything quite this dramatic. So we will continue our improvement efforts and will continue to stay in contact with the people affected. This is not a done deal. We're not gonna blow these people off. This is, we want happy neighbors. But same time, we need our sign. So we're gonna try to find some little ground where we keep our sign and we can make life a little more bearable for the people on the hill. They do have an issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone want to respond? So it sounds like good neighbors are gonna work that one out.
It sounds like that's gonna work. If they work together, that they may well get it solved.
Yeah, so keep us.
It is amazing, isn't it, how that finally could happen?
But I'm gonna direct Al to, will you see, look at his map and see if that's something that could be used for the centennial. Okay, if no further business, then we will be adjourned.